All right, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with the tax rate calculation for 2014. Kim?
This is the 2014 tax rate hearing for the St. Joseph's School District. We have to fix our property tax rate by September 1 each year. Failure to set the tax rate by September 1 reduces the current rates only that required to pay interest of principal on outstanding bonds. Tax rates are to be set to produce substantially same revenues as required in the annual budget. These numbers are, should be pretty final, our assessed valuation numbers, except for maybe some increases in personal property that the county had not gotten onto the books yet. Our real assessed valuation went from seven hundred, a little over 734,000 to 741,000, or I mean million, I'm sorry. So we had an increase in real assessed valuation of 7.5 million. Our new construction was 11.2 million. Prior year's new construction was 14.5 million. Our personal property did increase by a little over 3 million. Went from 257.8 million to 260, almost 261 million. Our locally assessed railroad and utility showed a decrease of 1.2 million. The personal property decreased 4 million and the real property increased 2.8 million. So overall, our assessed valuation had an increase of 9.58 million, or just under 1% from 2013. So we went from assessed valuation of $1,500,005 to $1,500,005. State assessed railroad and utility increased by approximately 5.5 million, or about 7.45%. These are preliminary numbers from state. And this, the state assessed railroad and utility is allocated between the Buchanan County School Districts based on enrollment, tax levies, and local assessed valuation. We're proposing an operating tax levy of 3.7741 and a debt service of .3145. The operating rate is at the maximum allowable. We have budgeted for a 3.9272 operating levy with the actual at 3.7741. So our operating revenue, we have budgeted at 36 million and estimated tax revenues from the post-tax rate will be just under 36 million. So a decrease of just about 111,000 from budget. The debt service levy remains unchanged. We are proposing a .1172 voluntary rollback to keep the promise to the voters from the April 2012 election on the bonds. This graph is just a historical representation of our operating levy. The blue is our operating tax levy. And we did not have, we had a debt service levy from '88 to 2000, and that debt service levy was about 62 cents. And right now, our current rate represented in the red is about half of that rate that we had then. But our operating levy is just a little over 2 cents higher than the rate that we had in 1980, or 34 years ago. Here's a history of our tax, total tax levy back to '04. Last year's rate was 3.8089 with a 31.45 debt service for a total of 412. And that's about $783 tax on a $100,000 assessed valuation home. 2014 tax is $4.09, a decrease of about $6 a year, $777 taxes on a $100,000 assessed New revenue from new construction and improvements is estimated to be just over 423,000. New revenue from reassessment is a decrease of about 412,000. The percentage of new revenue from reassessment is a decrease of a little over 1%. The reassessment change is negative because both real and primarily personal property decrease net of new construction, and your personal property has depreciation on it. So these are the tax rates that the administration is recommending the board to approve tonight. Our maximum authorized levy is the amount that is the greater of your 1984 rate or your most recent voter-approved rate. So our operating levy maximum is $4.68. The rate computed is the tax rate ceiling, and that is the maximum legal rate for the current year to comply with Missouri laws. And our rate computed for the operating is 4.2765. So the tax rate that you can levy is the lower of the maximum authorized or the tax The proxy rollback, the intent of the proxy rollback is to allow the property tax rate to adjust up or down annually depending on the state sales tax collections that we receive as a district. As sales tax collections increase, the property tax rate can decrease and vice versa. There's only about 55 Missouri school districts that have no proxy waiver, and we are one of them. So our proxy rollback, it consists of, as we continue to collect more state sales tax due to the proxy, then you have to rollback on your tax levy for those additional collections. So the current year's proxy rollback is a little over 50 cents. Last year's was .487 rollback, so our rollback went up because our state sales tax revenue So the administration would like to recommend that the board approve the tax rates for 2014 at 4.0886. An operating or institutional fund tax rate at 3.7741. This is a decrease of 3 cents from the prior year. A debt service of .3145 being no change to the debt service as promised in the April election.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. President? I have a first, is there a second? All right. At this time, I declare the meeting open for the purpose of conducting the tax rate hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the issue of our tax rate Yes, seeing and hearing, no requests, I declare the tax rate hearing concluded. Then we now return to our regular agenda. Is there any further discussion? Any questions? Is there any questions for Kim?
Let me ask you that. I know I was a little late, I apologize. So did I read this right? The 63 cents, is that still the same, or is it going up?
The 63 cents is still the same.
So now increasing the 63 cents?
Right. We can't increase the 63 cents. That is our maximum authorized.
Any other questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sneadon?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Gruzman?
Yes.
Okay, now I will call our regular meeting to order. Bled to allegiance. We have some guests.
Yes. Mr. Otto, here we are. Yes, here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or you can join the meeting if you haven't already done so.
Thank you, Dr. Otto. Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Here.
Dr. Cogan?
Here.
Mr. Sneadon?
Here.
Mrs. Danford?
Here.
Mrs. Hodges?
Here.
Mrs. Gruzman?
Here.
Is there any audience participation?
Can we skip back up to recognitions first? We have one recognition tonight.
Mr. Otto, you're on now.
Good evening, how's everybody doing? It's been a great start to the school year.
Very good, especially for you.
It's been great, it's been great. It's been following year to year since February. I had the privilege tonight to introduce a few guests who will be presenting Oak Grove Elementary, Coleman, if you will, from last school year to this year. A recognition one of we're very, very proud of, and I'd like to introduce Karen Wiger and Deadlines. But Karen is the Positive Behavior Support Consultant for Northwest Missouri State University, RPBC. It's something we're very, very proud of because we know that good schools always focus on the complete child, which means just not academics, but behavior as well. And we've seen some good things, and it's what good schools do. We did it in the 90s, and the state is very quantified. The Positive Behavior Support System now is done throughout the country. But Karen is here to present some folks who have been working hard, of course, all of our staff, had this great award. So Karen, come on up.
He stole part of my speech because I was going to quote him. So I'm going to go ahead and quote him anyway. Good afternoon. As you said, my name is Karen Wiger, and I am one of the PBS or PBIS consultants for the state of Missouri, representing Northwest Missouri. And it is indeed an honor today to present to Coleman/Oak Grove, and I'm going to refer to them as Oak Grove from now on, the prestigious level of silver for their success for implementation of the Positive Behavior Intervention Support System through Tiers 1 and 2. Oak Grove has the distinction of being the first school in Northwest Missouri to achieve this level of implementation. And, as you might guess, silver is not easily achieved. The Oak Grove staff and administration have worked diligently to create and maintain an environment that is safe, positive, and proactive for their students as well as for their staff. This type of environment supports both academic and social success for all students. Here he comes. This is where he stole it. As Mike has told me many times, it's what good schools do, and I believe in. Oak Grove has reaped the benefits of such an environment with office referrals decreasing by 40% since the year 2011. They have met the district's goal of 90-90, as well as their Tier 2 students, those students needing a little extra work and help with behavior. They have shown an improvement of 23 percentage points since 2012-13 school year. Another distinction for Oak Grove was this past year at Coleman, they were chosen as one of four, one of four districts in the whole state of Missouri, of which we have 800 schools that are PBIS. And they were chosen to be videotaped to become part of training tapes for other schools in the state of Missouri, and I will say Virginia, because the gentleman who did the videotaping is a professor in Virginia, and he was so excited. That's a little extra for him. They demonstrated what PBIS should look like and sound like in efficient and effective schools. So, on behalf of the state of Missouri and school-wide PBIS, I want to say congratulations to Oak Grove for their hard work and for their recognition of silver.
I've done this program, I support the school board and colleagues, and I'd like to say a few words here about our guest here. Brenda Smith, she is our Pbis Chair, and she goes above and beyond. You know, kids, wouldn't it be great if kids would come into a classroom and they did what you, you know, we tell them what to do, and they did these things, but that's not how it always works. Some need prompting, some need help. So Brenda, you're our chair, thank you. Janet Moody, another one. Precious love, another, and I don't know, I'm missing anyone. Julie Riley. We have a little cadre, and they're our leaders. They train the trainers, if you will, so they deserve a lot of the credit. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Audience participation?
Now, audience participation.
Todd Rockett would like to address the board.
This is Lacey Hawke Howard, she's our NEA, San Diego Secretary, Eric, and Eric. Eric Simmons is our Vice President. They always say you got to train your replacement. These guys are it, next generation. Thank you for your time. Mr. Hager, Dr. Zerwanka, school board members. I really want tonight, wanted to bring something to you. This is something we provide as a service to school boards and people around the state. It's through our division called NEA Publications. We basically take the information that's reported to DESI, we take that, we crunch it, we put it in a spreadsheet. From that, simple Excel spreadsheet, we have to actually hire a person full-time to do this. It's what we do. It's a benefit that NEA offers districts. You get what you're paid for. And it does cost us money, but this is something we do provide. Downside, I've heard this thing is biased. I've had people say, "It's biased, it's garbage, it's from NEA, they're biased, they're going to throw this thing, they're going to make it look like NEA districts look good, NSTA districts look bad." Not true. If you go through the actual numbers, you'll find that's just not the case. Now, keep in mind, we have no way of tracking payments that are made as individuals that are not reported to DESI. We have no way of knowing that, and for the most part, it's pretty dead-on. Hill uses it, they're not a slouch, far as last time I checked. One of the top academics districts in the state, they use it, North Kansas City uses it, Grandview uses it. I just don't understand why we would pay a consultant when we already have it in hand. Now, the second half is, this was my original intent tonight, but I also wanted to clear up some rumors. Two years ago, there was a person from another organization that got in the newspaper and said, "NEA strikes." They know that's not true. We don't rob banks, we don't kidnap children, and we don't strike, it's against state law. Recently, the new teacher's breakfast, I want to make sure I got this quote, NEA was quoted as having "lack of integrity." Amazing. Show me some proof. We're also accused of supporting abortion. We don't have a stand on abortion. That's amazing news to me. It's been really frustrating to us. We've tried to address this issue in a nice way, but it finally came to a head with me, and that's why all the school board members received this email from our CFO. And our CFO and the Dr. Zerwanka received from Karen Strump an email saying I was alleged that I took kickbacks and I took money for people that signed up. This is from our CFO. They would dismiss me on the spot if I took anything from anybody, on the spot. My name would go on a list, and I would no longer be allowed to hold any position nationally within NEA. Our integrity is on the line, hence this letter from our Chief Financial Officer. Now again, I've been having things thrown at me, like two weeks ago, I sunshine, and I was trying to get a grip on this. Where's this coming from? Why? So I sunshine, and I found out here just at 5:01 this afternoon that a large number of our employees have their benefits and their, well, their NSTA dues paid by this district. I've done some research, there's one person in our district that typically have their professional dues, that's Dr. Zerwanka. Typically, the superintendent of school has their dues paid for their professional dues. Everybody else is on their own. I've checked with every other NEA district in the state that I can find, nobody cuts a check from the district to pay for their members. We fight uphill about it. A lot of us have played sports one time in our career. There's nothing worse than playing in a hometown where the referees throw the call. If I am competing and my people are competing with an organization that gets their dues paid for administrators and gets a large number of support staff's dues paid, how can we ever play on a level playing field? Park Hill is 97% NEA. I don't hear any craziness. There's no striking, there's no forced abortions and some of the crazy stuff I've heard coming from different people. We just are about kids. We want to see this district the best, I think, the best we can. We're not going to do anything crazy. We've been painted as this monster, this awful NEA, this radical, crazy organization. That's not what it's about. 3 million people, 1 out of every 100 Americans belongs to NEA in this country. When we went to fight Amendment 3, it's a nationwide trend, and guess what? It just landed in Missouri. NEA was the one organization with the groundwork already in place. We're calling on national organizations to help us, and hopefully we'll kill this thing that's destroying local school districts. But we have to quit this stuff, this biased call, this all against us. We're, you know, I'll just be honest with you, the only time we get called in the game when it comes time for a levy passage. Boy, then they call on, "Get old NEA, come on in, help us out," and we gave per capita more money than any other organization in this district, per individual. We've always helped, but we tired, we are basically tired of getting thumped on the head, told we're bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rockett.
Katie Schwartz would like to address the board.
Hello, I'm Katie Schwartz, I'm a speech and debate teacher at Central, and because I'm a debate teacher, I'm going to tongue myself. Aristotle is quoted as saying, "The roots of education are bitter, but the fruit is sweet." And I feel as though this is very representative of where we are right now as a district and as a state. For many months, many of us have been experiencing bitterness, whether we have been bitter towards the state auditor's office, the Common Core state standards, No Child Left Behind, the stacks and stacks and stacks and stacks of IEPs and 504 plans we have to comb through, or bitter at our coworkers and our employer. I believe now is the time we can enjoy the fruits of our labor because our fruit, our kids, are back. And while some of our fruit is sweeter than others, we have the opportunities to change lives this school year. Stick with me for a second on my tree analogy. Imagine that the St. Joseph's School District is a big, vibrant, strong apple tree. We are currently fighting the bitterness that is the small, poisonous plant sitting next to our tree. Now, that current bitterness and that current poisonous plant that we're fighting is Amendment 3. And it is being watered by millions and millions of dollars from one man and his groups. Now, we have to defeat Amendment 3. There is no option. We must defeat Amendment 3 because it is bad for school districts, it's bad for this board, it's bad for teachers, and most of all, it's bad for our fruit. We wouldn't set our fruit outside to rot in the sweltering heat, we wouldn't leave it out in December to freeze. We cannot allow our fruit to be damaged by Amendment 3. We have to stop it in its tracks. We will always encounter bitterness, it's inevitable. But together as a district, together with our friends across the table, we can and we will overcome the bitterness of Amendment 3 by working together for what's best for kids. Our tree will grow big and vibrant for many years in the future. As a classroom teacher, I still get very nervous before the first day of school. I still make my husband take my picture, and my mom still puts it in our scrapbook. The first few days of school are the same for all of us, full of excitement and new opportunities. Very few moments are as exciting as the first day of school. Each new year, as the new fruit walks into my classroom, I take a moment and I just look at them. And I thank God that he has brought me each of these children. I thank God for calling me to be a teacher, and I pray for the year that we're about to enjoy together. I am not the best teacher in the state of Missouri, not the best teacher in St. Joe, not the best teacher at all. I could not do this job alone. Through collaboration with my coworkers across disciplines and buildings, by belonging to a member organization who speaks for teachers in this district, I have become a better teacher, and I become a better teacher every single day. I've never worked anywhere else besides the St. Joseph's School District, but I know that we are very fortunate. We're fortunate that we have a voice and a seat at the table where decisions are made, such as how much protected work time we get before the school year starts, such as what our professional development looks like and how it's given to us. All kinds of different things that we get a say in. We are so fortunate to have teachers like Barb Bell open our school year, because nothing can make you more excited for the school year than hearing her say from 2,200 people. We're fortunate that when we ask when our numbers of students who receive special services go up, we ask for more staff, and we get that. While we as a district have a long way to go, it's a great feeling knowing I'm part of a group that's making a difference for teachers. I'm thankful to work for a district that hears my concerns and makes real change for teachers and staff. My fruit and I are looking forward to a very sweet school year.
Thank you.
Connie Bonebrake would like to address the board.
My name is Connie Bonebrake. I used to be a public health nurse for 35 years. Once upon a time, my children went to Scath Elementary, wonderful school, and Chris Danforth was their counselor, so I remember Chris and grateful for all she did. But the reason I came tonight was not to make a complaint, not to take a stand on anything. I just have been reading in the newspaper that the St. Joe School District is considering giving free lunches to all elementary-age children, whether they can afford it or not. And I just wanted to thank you for considering that. I want to thank the board for giving free breakfasts to all the elementary and middle school, and I thank high school students. Gosh, that is a wonderful way to start their day. And thank you for their hot lunches. I wish we could do it for the middle school and high school kids, maybe at some point that can be a possibility. But right now, for these little bodies that are growing and changing and developing and learning, they need that food fuel every day. And I volunteer in the lunchroom at Mark Twain five days a week, and I want to tell you, those little children eat up those very healthy lunches that they're provided every day. And I just wanted to thank you all. I know that there's controversy sometimes over different things, and I just thought, as a taxpayer, a voter, a mother of a son and daughter now grown that have children of their own, so I'm also a grandma, I just want to thank you for the consideration you give to St. Joseph's children. Thank you.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda. Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneadon?
Yes.
Mrs. Gruzman?
Yes.
Is there any items to come off the agenda? If not, I will accept a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second.
Debbie, please call the roll.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Next item is additional maintenance staff. Mr. Hargan?
Over the last few months, we have taken Hall and Noye schools out of service. When we do the calculations, we see that we have taken offline 66,000 square feet of physical plant. But with the opening of two new schools, we brought online 166,000. So really, we've got about 100,000 additional square footage that we need to maintain and service. We operate on a formula of square footage as to how we staff these buildings for cleaning, maintenance, and daily ongoing work as needed. And we put that together with Hilliard Chemical and this kind of national formula that's been used for years and years. That formula would tell us that we would add four additional staff to the net between the closing of the two buildings, the addition of the other two. But we also are bringing a fifth because Benton High School is, square footage-wise, about three-quarters of a staff person short. And with the addition of that field house, that additional square footage kicks that building over the top. And so that gives us a total of five additional facility staff that we respectfully would ask the board to authorize us to hire and put in service.
I'll move to add those positions.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Are we, are these five additional, including taking the ones that worked at Hall and Noye?
Those positions have already been absorbed.
They've already gone to...
And so after we did that, we still find we've got 100,000 square feet and the five positions short.
We talked about this a little bit in the finance meeting when I was there. Some maintenance is still required at those buildings.
That is true, yes. We still have to visit those buildings probably twice a week during the winter at least, and it does take some staff time.
It's not like before, but you still have to come and...
So another question for those two buildings. Are we looking at what we're going to do with them in the future?
With those buildings?
With those two?
Yes.
Another thing, some people may think, well, you have two new buildings. You have buildings with warranties and so forth. Maybe you should reduce your maintenance staff. And just one example, in those buildings, we have carpet everywhere. There are a lot of other buildings with vinyl tile. So it takes a lot longer just to vacuum the carpet, to clean the room, in those new buildings. So we have other issues besides just adding the additional square footage.
That's a good point. Back in 2000, we learned a good lesson with the additions to all the buildings. We added 250 rooftop air conditioning units that didn't plan in the budget for any HVAC personnel. And that 90 days active warranties, we experienced that.
How do they do that? Make them go wrong just after?
It's a planned obsolescence.
It's in computer chips.
Any other questions? If not, Debbie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Next three items are playground equipment.
And I'm glad that Nick Robb is here tonight because he can attest that if we thought building the two schools was complicated, trying to bid playground equipment may be the most challenging thing we've ever done. You can't make an apple an apple. No playground companies have materials and products of exactly the same dimensions and sizes. So you can't state that you want a specific specification and everyone can bid. Every playground company makes proprietary equipment. So the methods that we had available to us to meet statutory and policy requirements were to go through a co-op that the state has for school districts. But when we ran those models, we saw that there's about a $15,000 markup that you pay for a premium because you can't bid. And so you can go to a co-op and buy, and that's what you get is about, so that's $45,000 for it. The other option was to, I mean, not to exceed price. And we had budgeted $200,000 for each of the two new schools. And the way that worked then is the companies were challenged to put together the best possible designs they could in a not-to-exceed amount. And then our principals, teachers, and program experts would review those designs, and they would pick what was most appropriate in that not-to-exceed amount. And that satisfied the requirements as well. We're very pleased that we had five companies bid, so we did have competition. We had several options, an option one and an option two. For Carden Park Elementary School, the group that looked at the playground equipment selected the Play Power Little Tykes equipment, option two, at $199,515.05.
Can we see the picture?
Pardon?
Can we see the picture?
Yeah, they're in the other room.
I saw them out there when we came in, and I thought they were going to show.
Bring them back up. We respectfully ask the board to accept the administrative recommendation for the playground equipment at Carden Park.
I should make that motion?
Second. Questions?
How soon will we start work on that?
The sites are graded, prepped, and ready to go. I would think within 10 days, we ought to see some activity there.
How long does it take to finish them?
About 30 days. They get the base prep and the concrete, or, excuse me, the equipment in, then the concrete, and then the rubberized pad on top of the steps.
Dr. Hargan, I think we ought to make the public know that the staff had a lot of input into what they're putting on the...
Well, they certainly did. I wouldn't know the best playground here or not, but we had tannie flower shoes involved in the age-appropriate kids that will use the equipment. The teachers of those buildings, and most importantly was the administrator, the principal. We turned these over, gave them to the schools. They pulled together the people that they wanted to go through that, and then they made those recommendations to us. So actually, it was a building-level choice.
Any other questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
The next is for Oak Grove. The committee that reviewed felt its best configuration was national playground compliance, their option one, at a bid price of $191,314.75.
I'd like to motion that we accept that bid.
Second.
Okay. Questions?
Is that them?
This is...
I don't think I have them all over here, but I'll try and find them after I'm finished and bring them out because they are very colorful.
Now, this price is for the two playgrounds at each location, right?
Yes, that is correct. The playgrounds are divided, again, age-appropriate, and there are two at each site.
And I saw Dr. Otto during the open house asking students which playground equipment they thought would work the best, too. So thank you, Dr. Otto.
That's right, they're playing on it. They'll know good.
And when will that one be ready?
Well, about the same time. We have three out of the five companies. They selected three different companies. So the bidding process worked very well. Five companies, they picked three, so they'll be able to work independently of one another. Waiting to go from one to the other will all start at the same time.
So the ground at Oak Grove is ready to...
It is.
Much improved. Yes, I drove by there every day. Much flatter.
Opening house was a little different.
Much flatter now.
They didn't want to take that dirt away, and only they have to bring it back. So they waited till it bettered.
It's all good.
Okay, any other questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
And we have buildings with an average age in the late 70s and still some 100-year-old buildings. Trying to bring them into ADA compliance and all the national standards is very difficult. Each summer, we take one existing elementary school and completely gut the playground and bring it up to today's standards. You've seen Edison and a number of the other schools. This year, Hosea is the elementary school targeted, and we went through exactly the same process for them. And they have one playground, not two. So that's why you're going to see a little bit of a dollar difference. The committee looked at AFCO with option one as the best configuration at a price of Respectfully ask the board to accept the administrative recommendation for Hosea.
Second.
Questions?
Mark Newton. I have a question now that I'm thinking of it. Hall and Noye, the playground equipments that's there, what did we do with that?
Well, it's still in place. One of the biggest problems we would have is that equipment would not be certified at any school if we were to take it out and take it to another school. When we add to a school, we have to buy equipment that does meet the 2014 national and local and state guidelines. Plus, you have to cut it off at the ground and try and move it, and it just really can't be done.
So damages it?
It will damage it, but most importantly is you'll never get the playground certified that you take it to. So it will either be removed by down the road or depending on how the buildings are repurposed could stay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Thank you. Denver had a company approach us before and tell us that we had given them too much work, but that happened this year. On our asphalt projects, Hosea, Truman, Hilliard, and the Park Center, Keller Construction was given all four of those. Keller was low on Hosea, Truman, and Hilliard, and Herzog was low on the Ark Building. But you might remember back to one of the school bids where a general contractor failed to put in the subcontractor list, disqualified, and could not accept the bid. That happened to Herzog. So that put us in a position of taking Keller's bid, which was considerably higher, to do the Ark Building. Well, as he got into the summer and began doing the work, and we received phone calls, he said, "We're just not going to be able to do that building, and we'd like to just walk away from it and maybe go back to your second bidder." We did take that to legal counsel and wanted to make sure we had walked through the proper steps. Again, we've never run across this before. I think the key was that there was no harm coming to Keller Construction. So they simply did not want the work. And so for the district then to allow Herzog to submit a subcontractor list after the fact was acceptable, because again, it did no harm to Keller, that subcontractor list was presented, the subcontractor list was approved, and we will ask you then to transfer and authorize Herzog to perform that work. The original bid from Keller was $51,100, and Herzog's bid was $35,600. So it is a savings of $15,500.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Debbie?
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
About 20 minutes ago, I just received the recalculation of our delinquent lunch accounts, and I'm really pleased to tell you, we continue to aggressively try and collect the money. And that number was reported as $37,418 by the middle of last week, but the recalculation shows us today we have collected significantly, and the outstanding balance now is $22,028. That's what's owed. I want to be really clear when we talk about who is or who isn't paying for lunch. Remember, roughly 64% of our students are on free or reduced lunch. So we are talking about a group of students who the USDA, federal government, and the State Department, they are paying customers. So our mission is to provide paying customers an opportunity to eat. It is not to buy them their meal. It's to make it available to them. It's kind of a slippery slope. Remember, this first started for this district back in 2008 when there was an economic meltdown in this country, and we had an awful lot of families that were on that border. They just did not quite qualify, and money was very tight, and we saw a lot of elementary students that weren't eating. And the board said, "We don't want that to happen in this district. We want those elementary students to eat a regular hot lunch." The downside to that was then some students knew they would get a lunch whether they paid or not, and then some of the group who had available disposable cash didn't pay. And so delinquencies continued to mount. As we discussed it again, it's not an eight-year-old child's fault that no one is there to pay for lunch. And so the recommendation is that we give every elementary student a hot lunch. The universal lunch program, I think it's one of the first things you heard Dr. Zalwak say at his news conference when he was hired, was he intended to have every student in this district eat a free lunch, whether you were paid free or reduced. And that's happening this year. High school students are eating free breakfast. So we know that every student has a breakfast to start the day, and at elementary, it's our recommendation that whether they actually pay or not, that they receive that lunch. And I think the record will show that our efforts to collect work, and we just dropped this number significantly in about three weeks, and we'll continue to go after to collect that money that is owed us. But at the secondary level, we really believe that by providing an alternate lunch for those students, it also is very likely to stimulate many of them to take advantage of the free and reduced lunch program. The numbers don't match. If you have 64% in elementary that qualify, why does the number drop to 40 in secondary? They just don't want to apply, fill out the form, they don't want to do it. This might prompt that, which would be good for everyone involved. Again, we will aggressively go out to collect any money that is owed us, but the breakdown of delinquent money from 2008 forward always shows that it's a very, very small amount. The total is a very, very small amount of it comes from elementary. So that's never been the biggest drain, which is fortunate. The alternate lunch is a cheese sandwich and a bottle of water. And again, we're not obligated to give a student who's deemed by the federal government and the state government as being a paying client. We are not obligated to give them anything, but we'll offer them a cheese sandwich and a bottle of water. Any losses that we might incur this year can easily be covered by the universal breakfast program. The net after revenue and expenses nets out, that program should generate $400,000 to $500,000 for that department. So if we take a loss in elementary, it's several tens of thousands of dollars net, we're okay. The formula worked for us very well, very favorably with the universal breakfast program, and it helps that every elementary student have a hot lunch. So it would be the administration's recommendation that this board consider that policy and that we would implement that immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Yes, I have a question. The universal breakfast sounds like it helps our finances. How is that so? Is it a reimbursement that we get?
It is. There's a higher multiplier on the breakfast program, and the actual cost of those products is less in... of those products is less in time preparation and just the nature of what you eat for breakfast. So it's very favorable, and I think part of that is that the multiplier is high because the government wants to make sure that they get breakfast program in schools. And so if you have a well-run department, if you pay attention to your costs, and you're highly organized, I mean, this universal lunch program does, or breakfast program doesn't necessarily look the same in every building. A town you want each building with the principal and staff, so what's the best way for us to get this product into the hands of your kids, valve schedule, so that everybody eats. In some cases, they go to cafeteria. Others, it's in the room. So it's different in each place. But and because it is so fine-tuned, and we're using very few resources to get it delivered, the costs are really, really low, and the multiplier was high. And you first have to have a very high free or reduced lunch rate, like 64%. If you were sitting here at 30, 35%, even with a high multiplier, you would not net enough money.
So the multiplier that is used for lunch, is it a lower?
It is lower. It is lower, and there are questions about the universal lunch program and the opportunity for choice. And so if the multiplier is low, what may happen is that, and we're looking at this daily because those things are in play right now, is that every student had to eat a hamburger on Monday, and every student had a taco on Tuesday, and every student had a hot dog on Wednesday. We've taken choice out, and with food and people and 11,500 different pallets out there, that would probably really, really harm your participation rate.
I just have a...
Thank you.
...comment if you don't. I know when I worked out at Hyde, the secretary and I kept really close track of those kids that were having those negative balances, and when they got to a certain point, we actually physically sent home an application with those students, and we were always surprised at how many came back, because we can go back, correct? Once the paperwork's filled out, can we go back and...
No, no, no. There's a grace period, the first, say, three weeks of school, where everybody that was identified the previous year automatically is covered for the first three weeks, then the paperwork ends, and you can't go back in time. But parent-teacher conferences and buildings have been very aggressive in getting those forms out.
Yeah, we were always really happy to know that, just sending that home, because sometimes they don't always do that at the beginning of the year, and they think that, oh, we can do it this year, we'll be fine. But then they feel, they soon realize that they can't afford it. So then the paperwork.
But I think you also were one of the buildings where teachers took up a collection and support staff and kept some money and actually bought lunches for students. That happens in our buildings. Our staff buy lunches for the kids, very empathetic organization, and to take that burden away and to not have to watch these kids not eat.
I think, did we have a student who did that too, did a fundraiser? Or was that in another district I was reading about? But yeah.
Well, you can sign up for a free or reduced lunch whenever it is you qualify, right?
You could be qualified today and just not sign up until December. But yes, as long as you qualify, it's up to you as to when you...
It's just you wouldn't get the ones previously free from there.
Absolutely.
But you would no longer accrue because you'd get on the program.
Yes. And one of the things these universal programs do is they do away with all the paperwork. So if there are any forms, if there was a universal lunch program, there aren't any free or reduced lunch forms anymore, because formula, the multiplier works as a, none of that matters any longer. And we think of the administrative overhead that goes into that, the audits, you know, they're in here, just they just, it's a lot of work. And so that would really streamline it if there's any way to figure out how to make it work financially.
Any other questions? Debbie?
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Coggin?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Upstate.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Mr. Flowers?
Mr. Hager, members of the Board of Education. On Friday, we had a lengthy discussion on the teacher evaluation booklet in the Personnel Committee. The teacher evaluation booklet itself incorporates nine standards and 36 quality indicators as identified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is based on the Missouri waiver of no child left behind. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education fully put together a task force three years ago and continued with through that task force to identify and include as many stakeholders in the development of this booklet. Every teacher in years one through five will continue to get a sum to evaluation in this model, and ten-year teachers will also be evaluated to a sum of evaluation every third year. I think one of the real changes in this model is that teachers in years three plus will now have an educated growth plan. Of those 36 quality indicators, the district has chosen two to focus on this year, and that's 4.1 and 7.2. We chose those two in particular because the district has already done a lot of professional development in those two areas. And so we wanted to ease the tension with our teaching staff, with our administrative staff. We have to evaluate to allow us to focus on two critical areas over the course of every building. So teachers in one building could communicate with teachers in another building, and they'd be focused on the same two criteria. So we have before you the draft version, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Who is it that does the evaluation of the teachers? Is it the principal?
Typically, it's the building principal. Maybe the assistant principal in the middle schools and high schools.
Is there any downside to what we're trying to do here?
I think the change is difficult, and so the model is changing. It's focusing on teacher growth. I think it's going to force a lot more communication between evaluator and teacher. I think one of the biggest hurdles we'll overcome is probably a year from now, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education delayed by a year, having student growth as far as, as far, as part of the evaluation process. I think as we process through this in year one, I don't see a lot of downside. I think the challenge is going to be when you incorporate student growth, I think it's going to be, we're still have to figure out how to make that happen.
It was 4.1 and 7.2?
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
I believe we accept this new...
Teacher evaluation.
Teacher evaluation.
Second.
Further questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Coggin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Upstate.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Sheriff, for real quote, we also had a lengthy discussion in the Personnel Committee on Friday in regard to our insurance. We've been very, very fortunate over the last five years in particular to keep down our cost of insurance. I think we averaged a 3.3% increase over the timeframe. We've also been very fortunate to get rebates through maximum refund from Blue Cross Blue Shield based on really the work of our staff who falls under our plan. And so the better we do, the more opportunity we have to receive those rebate checks. And I think with those refunds, it drops down the average to 1.86% over that five-year period. This year, we haven't been as fortunate. I think one of the big challenges for us, and I think for many districts and many other organizations, is in our plan, we have a stopgap, a stop-loss gap where any claim that's over $75,000 gets pulled off the top. We still end up paying for it. That percentage of our plan went up about 37%. Fortunately, it's a smaller piece to the puzzle. I think that equates to about 3.5% of the total. The bid from, the real quote from Blue Cross Blue Shield is an 8.8% increase, even though it's much higher than we've had in the past few years. I think based on a lot of our work with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we recommend that we accept their payment.
I move we accept the attached quote. I just went through the Personnel Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions?
This is the insurance, right?
Health insurance, correct.
Insurance. And so how, what's the cost for a teacher? Is this for what our teachers and our staff is paying out of the paycheck?
That's correct. And the Board of Education usually pays 95% for an individual only. The member pays 5% for all other groups. It's usually 50% paid by the board, 50% paid by the individual.
Okay, so right now, that average is what? What is it by individual?
Currently, about $31, I believe a month is paid for by the employee only.
So what's it going to go up to? For the individual, 8%?
Well, 10% is pretty well going to be 3. So maybe up to 35?
30. So we don't have, we didn't have that figure.
I did not break it down into how much the employee was going to pay. The premium itself went from 617 to maybe 6...
71.
671. And so the board would pay 95% of that, the individual would pay 5%.
Thank you.
I have a question. On the rebates that we have been fortunate to receive over the last couple of years, in the notes here, it says this past May of 2014, we received a refund over $375,000.
Correct.
Okay, that was this, just this past May.
That's correct.
And in May of 2013, we received $546,000 rebate.
That's correct.
So, yes, you're tracking with me. So I assume that has to do with the claims. What are, what are the odds that we would again, is that what that's based on, that we'll get that rebate? How do we get that money again?
We are keeping our fingers crossed that we do much better in our claims experience than what is projected. We have been fortunate over the last several years to average about $400,000 and $700,000 in rebate. And so if serve holds, then maybe we'll receive the same in the spring of 2015. This is all, this will all be based on our claims experience from January 1, no, excuse me, 2016. So it will be based on our claim experience from January 1 of 2015 to December 30 of 2015. And so if serve holds true, then we'll hopefully receive a rebate.
So the year, the year is from January through December?
Correct. And one of the challenges, I think, for Ms. Mulvaney is it is split. And so within, we have really two fiscal years where health insurance is split over based on it being a January 1 through, end of December compared to our fiscal year being July 1 through June 30.
Thank you.
The Personnel Committee was not in favor of raising the rates for the staff. So at this point in time, we're willing to eat the increase and not push that on the staff.
And I think it's important to point out that we still retain our grandfather status with this plan without making any wholesale changes to our plan, which would include changing the percent to employees' way to retain that grandfather status.
So I want to go back to what Mr. Sneeden said. So at this time for the following year, we're, the board's gonna, whatever the amount the member's paying now, $31, whatever it was in the month, that isn't going to change, and we are going to absorb?
No. They will go up slightly for the employee, but it'd be based on a 5%. So as the price of the premium went up from 617 to 674, the board would incur 95% of that cost. The employee will incur 5%. So yes, their premium will go up slightly.
That was the...
But the percentage does not change.
That is correct.
Well, I just didn't want the, I didn't want staff to say, you know, think that we were keeping it $31, and then we upped it.
No, it will go up slightly.
Still the 5%. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Debbie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Coggin?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford, looking for that rebate, yes. Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Also before you is the quote from Blue Cross Blue Shield for our voluntary dental. That is an 18.91% increase. But were to give a little bit of backfield, we went to Blue Cross Blue Shield two years ago. Our former company, Meritas, quoted us a 14% increase. Blue Cross Blue Shield came at a 4% decrease. And so we made up about 80% two years ago. They gave us a two-year rate guarantee, so the cost of that dental plan did not go up for two years. And so even though it is an 18.91% increase, I think that's even after negotiations, because I believe Blue Cross Blue Shield really was looking for a 30% increase. There's about a 97% pay rate for what they collected. And so before you is an 18.91%. I believe it includes about a $5 increase per month for those who take part in the voluntary plan.
Mr. Chairman, I was assuming that all of this was on the same motion. Did we not just approve the whole package, or are we going to break this down with maybe our legal consultants?
Yeah, since we didn't include it altogether, we'll have to do each one.
I knew that we accept the dental package.
I'll second.
Questions?
How many of our employees utilize the dental program?
I have it. I have it, I promise.
And why he's looking, this is Dave Johnson. He's our consultant. Let's see this.
There's lots of papers for insurance companies.
And why he's looking, one of the benefits, two years ago, going to Blue Cross Blue Shield, they also allowed us to offer a buy-up plan, which could give a little bit more benefits, a little more costly, but a little more benefit for those employees who feel they need it.
Right. And they can buy it for their family too, right?
Yes. About 1,200 people. Excuse me, it'd be 1,200 subscribers, which would include any retirees or any COVRA. So, but then members are 2,000, over 2,000 people. So that would include 162 additional spouses, 40 child or children, and 66 families. So there's a lot of participation in that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for all the success.
Any other questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Dr. Coggin?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Last on the list is Benton High School football uniforms. We do have a cycle for the replacement of uniforms throughout all of our three high schools. This just happened to be a year that Benton High School purchased uniforms because of the sheer numbers. Because of the sheer numbers, that went over $15,000. So before you is an invoice for football uniforms at Benton High School. And again, we discussed this at the personnel committee on Friday.
I moved we accept the uniforms.
I second.
Any questions?
Well then, in the committee meeting, Mr. Flowers, I asked him about the, well, this conversation about the schools are using different vendors. One might be a Diaz Under Armour. These, these the Benton kids want the Nike. I don't like the black, but I'll take that one over. But he's going to look at maybe a universal bid where they come in for all three schools, maybe save us, save us some money that way rather than each school taking a different vendor. You know, maybe they'll all do...
Just in case it's cheaper that way.
And we might get more stuff.
Yeah, not, I mean, and that would include all activities over those three schools. And so we feel by going to possibly a single source, we could save the district a lot of dollars. And so that's something that Dr. Zawanka and I talked about at the end of last year and hope to pursue that this school year together.
Well, is there a reason why each one of them choose a different vendor? Is it preference for the coach or for the students? I mean, I've never...
Possibly both. I think that it's also tradition. We've always done it that way. We were always given the flexibility to the coaches to determine which uniform they liked the most. And I say that even through different sports at the same high school, they use different vendors. And so we believe that there's a lot of cost savings for a district our size that we went to a sole source vendor.
Filling in that same line, I understand the idea of numbers, but just occurred to me, since we, we do use the Kansas City Co-op and St. Louis Co-op when purchasing computers or whatever it might be, has there been discussion with the school districts and those co-ops to come up with a one vendor source? Because I would think if we could save dollars by combining three schools, what could we do if we combined the entire St. Louis, Kansas City area with, with a co-op? And, and why not if we're not already doing that?
I'm going to defer that to Dr. Zawanka, she's not a part of the committee.
There, there has not been discussion of that, but that would be something we could bring forth. I think it'll take a little bit of time to go to that, but I think as everybody sees the cost savings in every school district.
Just seems like the next step.
Well, I'll bring that forward and see, thank you.
So that, that way they could actually bid, each different company could bid and then the...
To be the co-op provider, right.
Exactly.
That's a good idea. I just didn't know if there was a benefit from one brand to another. Because I, I've heard the Under Armour stuff is just like, you know, awesome, but I don't know.
I think it's always personal preference.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if there was a benefit. Sure, like, it's more awesome. Give us that little edge we need.
It's a lucky, it's a lucky term.
Any other questions? Debbie, please call roll.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers? Next on the agenda is Kinderlau on the District Assessment Plan and Calendars.
Good evening. We have just a very brief update for you with regard to the District Assessment Plan and Calendars being published for, being published on our website. And last time, we hadn't gotten all the information that we needed from our vendor to plug in some items, and so we had left some of those things off the table. And wanted to let you know that we do have those new assessments from our vendor, and they will be to us September 5th, and they'll be deployed September 15th. So that was a function of the revised Missouri Assessment Program, so I wanted to update you with that.
Any questions? Thank you. Then Mr. Flowers.
We also discussed at personnel committee on Friday, the student-staff ratios. I believe this is a chart that Dr. Cogan's been looking for, for a few years. It is something that we look at and have looked at regularly for at least my tenure here in the district. We did move three elementary teachers. I believe the sections should start today. That's 1 percent of our total elementary sections. We were fortunate this year that all three teachers that we moved volunteered, and so we did not have to do any involuntary transfers. So I think that made the transition a little smoother. We also, as at this point in time, needed to add two oversized classroom pairs.
Any questions? Questions?
A lot, go ahead.
Mr. Flowers, are we talking about this chart here then, of the student-teacher ratios?
Correct.
I was looking at this today, and what's our threshold as a district?
It varies. In grades K through 2, the average has to be over 25. In grades 3 and 4, over 27. And in grades 5 and 6, over 30. And that is based on IMSA guidelines.
Grades 5 and 6 is over 30?
Correct. The, the average has to be over 30.
I looked at the 28 in the fifth grades at Field.
Correct. That is a, and I think it has been historically a large section at Eugene Field. I think if you look at the total student-staff ratio at Field, it's the second lowest in the district. They just happen to have a class size that's pretty large.
And then the Ellison is 28 in the third grade, or...
Second grade.
Second grade.
That is where we added the oversized classroom pair.
I'm sorry?
Ellison is the place where we added the oversized classroom pair. And so based, based on the boundary change and some transfer issues, we end up adding a kindergarten section, a first grade section, and an oversized classroom pair to Ellison the first few days of school.
And the 27 at Lake in the third grade?
And that is right on the threshold.
And so what would we have to go to? Let's take Lake and...
One more student at Lake.
One?
One more.
Just one to add a whole classroom?
Actually, no. With Lake in third grade at 27, one more would qualify them for a pair of professional.
A pair?
Correct.
Okay, and so that would put a pair in each room?
No, with IMSA guidelines, by adding a pair, you can add up to five. It equates to five students per, per classroom if this is two-section building. So no, we'd add a pair that would split between both of those grade levels, between both of those classes.
Oh, that pair would go between both rooms?
Yeah, one class between the whole third grade.
Okay. How stable is that with teacher moving back and forth from classroom to classroom? We've probably done it, I'm sure, but I just wonder.
We've done it every year, in the last eight at least that I've been here, so...
And so what kind of feedback are we getting out of that?
It, it depends on how large the number grows. We have in the past added a pair in both classrooms. But for Lake as example, as in third grade where 27 is the number, they'd have to add several more students before we'd consider adding a pair to both classrooms.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one. Mr. Flowers, this is something that you will bring to the board the monthly, just to let us know where enrollment is.
I'd be more than happy to either bring this chart and/or anytime we'd have the need to add an oversized classroom pair.
If it changes.
Based on numbers changing, we would definitely bring that to the Board of Education. We would first look at pair of professionals that we had already placed and whether those sections and classrooms continue to need one before adding additional.
Sure.
Mr. Flowers, could we, you know, could we have this information at least the first three months of each semester because of the mobility rate we have in the school history? It kind of gives an idea of the fluctuations of these classroom sizes.
First three months of each semester or of each school year?
I say semester because there's a lot of mobility in semester.
I'd be more than happy to share this each month if you'd like.
That's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do a shout out to Brian Shindor for his work and the staff for, for projecting these, these new boundaries of new schools. I mean, it's, it's, whenever you change the boundaries in this town, well, that's a big, that's a big deal. And these were all guestimates that Brian and his staff has done. We didn't know we were going to have all those kindergartners show up at Eugene Field. When I heard about it, I called and said, what's going on here? But I just wanted to tell Brian and his staff and Fred and the whole group, they did a pretty good job. We're lucky that we only had a couple of hiccups here and there, but it was good, good projections out of that group. Job well done. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. You know, Mr. President, I would also like to suggest that the entire administrative staff and, and teaching and support staff need to be commended. This has been a marvelous opening considering all of the, the changes that have taken place. And along with Brian, and certainly he deserves a real salute, but if we could give that same salute and round of applause to all of our staff, because it's, it's just really been a great school opening, even though our, we do need to get our school buildings air-conditioned. It's just too hot to begin in the middle of August unless, unless we have air conditioning for, for our children. But a great start, a great start.
Thank you. Dr. Zawaka?
Welcome, man. It is hot, and we are working to find ways to make things better. But as you, as you mentioned, Dr. Cogan, the couple of challenges we face is the math test and Kendra mentioned the schedule and trying to meet that schedule and getting first semester finished before Christmas break so students at the high school level can, can get their finals done before Christmas break and not come back after. So that puts a starting earlier in the year, and we'll work to build in more time. We built in some this year, we'll work to build in some more. To, to mention a couple of things as we wrap up tonight, my hat's off to the tech department. I don't know if Rick's still back there. Oh, there he is. And the tech department, we have, they have installed over 200 new access, wireless access points across the district. They are rolling out over 6,200 computers for students, 3,600 at the elementary level and 2,600 at the high school level. And just a phenomenal job, and we've mentioned Universal Breakfast that is going very, very well. Our ACT scores are up, higher than they've been in the last five years, it looks like. And that report will be coming out very soon, as well as our APR. And the last thing I have is really just, it's Mr. Otto, I asked Mr. Otto to stay, and he doesn't even know about this, but this kind of tells you that our teachers, our support staff, you know, our maintenance staff, they did a phenomenal job. They moved over 140 teachers, right, was it 146? 156. 156. Teachers moved to different places and just cleaning up the facilities and getting things ready for, for children. And I just, my hat's off to Mr. Otto. This is a card I got, and I want to read it. Says, Dear Dr. Zawaka, recently I had the opportunity to meet the Coleman, this is, at the time Coleman Elementary Principal, Mr. Otto. He was asked to walk my family through the procedure for transferring my two grandchildren from St. Francis to the newly-built Oak Grove School. I was thoroughly impressed with his professionalism and demeanor, the effort he exhibited in scheduling one of his teachers to interview the, and test her grandsons. I'm trying to leave out some stuff because I don't want to be personally identified with it. But he was thoughtful, caring, and helped my family feel comfortable during this process. Both he and kindergarten teacher went out of their way to ensure our questions were answered, and they accommodated our needs. And just wanted to, wanted us to know in our district that they thought that, just give Mr. Otto and his staff, and I saw that last week, last Thursday. And just, and Mr. Otto is a great example because our teachers do this across the district. And it's just a fabulous place to educate children. So my hat's off to the board, and thank you for a great start to the year.
Thank you. Okay, I think all we have left is some future meeting dates.
Does this change, Debbie? Because that was the one I had on the calendar. Did we change this? We changed, we did have one scheduled for Tuesday, I put it at April 1st. Your chair, Ben Martin, I had to move that one. Okay. That's finance committee we had to move.
Okay, well, at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved to... Second.
Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.